Okay, I have to start. Hey, I know, those are, those are things that we were, I was looking at. They, they are gifts, right? Okay. Are there gonna be gifts, are they gonna give for Christmas? Are they gonna be? Sorry. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everyone. Hi Alma, how are you, Rona? How are you?
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
I'll be right back. I'm printing out the agenda.
Hello, everybody. Good evening.
Hi, Heron.
Hi, Alma. How are you?
Hi, Heron.
Hey, dear. How are you, Hector?
How are you?
I am well, thank you.
Rona?
Hey, Rona. Hey, Maggie.
Is your voice back?
I was just gonna ask. I hope she's feeling better.
Yes, it is. Ever so slowly, I'm almost there.
Good.
I sound like Lauren Bacall.
It's great. It sounds awesome.
Thank you. You needed jazz CD to go along with that.
That's a great idea, Heron. Great idea. I've been looking for my calling.
Right?
Hello, Chairman Van Lee. Nice to see you.
Good to see you.
So there, there was a whole debate today, Reggie, whether you were chairman or chairperson.
Hmm.
We didn't know where you fall. I don't know. There's, it's, it's a mixed thing. People were like, it should be chairperson, should just be chair, it should be chairman. I don't know that we've settled the debate.
The legislation says chairperson, I think.
Yeah, I think that's the PC way.
Yeah, let's, let's stick with the legislation. That's the safest route.
Right.
And at the end of my comments, I was gonna read the proclamation around. Is that the best place to go?
Oh, that's perfect. Yes, thank you for remembering.
Four score and seven years ago. Oh, wrong proclamation.
Hey, Ryan and David.
Good evening, all.
Hello, hello.
Oh, my gavel. Quarter mark clock is five thirty-one. Heron, should I wait a minute or should I start?
I think we have a critical mass. Let me take a quick look. Yeah, I think we can get started. We have a, a good group already here, Steph, and. Yep.
You're good?
Yes, sir.
So. The meeting will come to order. The time is five thirty-two on Monday, October the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. This is a regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Commission on the Arts and Humanities. My name is Reggie Van Lee, Chairperson of the Commission, and I will now call the role. When you hear your name, please answer present. Stacy Lee Banks. Cora Masters Berry. Maggie Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Juanice Floyd. Rhonda, I'm sorry, Rhonda Wolf Friedman.
I'm here.
Sorry, Rhonda, sorry. Alma Gates.
Present.
Natalie Hopkinson. Kimber Minketti.
Present.
Mary Ann Miller. Mariah Rooney.
Present.
Cece. Carla Sims. Hector Torres.
Present.
Jose Uclis. Gretchen Warden.
Present.
Derek Younger.
Present.
Reggie Van Lee, present. Uh, did anybody come afterwards? Stacy, Cora, Juanice, Natalie, Mary Ann, Cece?
Jose Uclis.
Jose, welcome. Good, good. So we certainly have a quorum. Um. So we can proceed. The quorum is present. This is a meeting of a public body held in open session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act DC Log eighteen dash three fifty, DC Official Code two dash five seven one and two dash five eight zero. The meeting is being conducted remotely using the Cisco WebEx Virtual Meeting Platform and is being livestreamed to the Commission's YouTube channel. An electronic recording of the meeting will be available for viewing online following the conclusion of the meeting. I will now read the land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will, some were drawn to leave their distant homes in hope of a better life, and some have lived in this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We stand on the ancestral lands of the Tocotank and the Piscataway people. We pay respects to their elders, past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today. And please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events and to use such truths to guide the legacy of this arts commission. Thank you. The agenda for this meeting was previously circulated. Is there any objection to the agenda? Here are no objection. The agenda stands as adopted. Next is the approval of the September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one meeting minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Here are no corrections. The minutes stand as approved. So now I'll give my welcome with the help of my trusty notes. So welcome. Uh, we've had a very busy September and busy start of October as we continue to make progress against our collective agenda. Just to remind you, there are three major pillars to our collective agenda. First, interdependence, uh, the commission in conversation and bringing the community to, I'm sorry, bringing the commission to the community are activities we've executed in September and October. As you know, we had the reception at the Kennedy Center during National Dance Day in Northwest Washington DC. Art All Night Events held across the city with a special reception in Congress Heights and visits by myself to Congress Heights, Shaw, and H Street. The Mayor's Arts Awards reflecting their re-engagement between the Commission and the Mayor's Office at the Howard Theater. Uh, two team-building events between the staff and the commissioners to drive improved working relationships and camaraderie. More to come, uh, in driving collaboration and innovation with the city council members, the mayor's office, and among the, the commission staff and commissioners. So stay tuned for that. So we've made great progress on the independence, but there's more to come. The second pillar is the strategic plan. Today, we will vote on recommendations from the grants committee reflecting our continued focus on equity and inclusion and sustainability. Moreover, as we revisit our grant-making approach in line with our strategy of capacity building and sustainability, we've met with the Ford Foundation to gain insights from one of the largest and most innovative grant-making organizations in the world, in our considerations and in our planning. Excuse me, I am particularly excited over two actions or two notions under consideration, not yet determined, but under consideration. The first is advancing our treatment of grantees as our partners. Rather than the traditional transactional relationship between funders and grantees, we want to continue a partnership with our grantees. More to come on that. Second, creating a mentor protege program focused on capacity building and sustainability. Where grantees, both large and small, will work with other grantees, both large and small, with particular skills, insights, and training in fundraising, innovative programming, audience development, diversity initiatives, board development, and staff enrichment. And all this will be shared between various grantees, both broadly and individually. So again, more to come on that. Those are some good ideas we've had for a while, but we're reinforcing the conversation with the Ford Foundation. Third was the Task Force on Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging, which created the IDEA Committee, IDEA, Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Access. We've drafted an equity statement for the commission. We'll be presenting it, uh, eventually. Hoping that we could have presented it at this meeting, but a lot of work needs to go forth before we can present it. But, but stay tuned for that. We're developing a communication, a communications plan for the release of the statement and want to build a culture of transparency to ensure that we include in all of our constituents' voices in this work. We're digging deep into the recommendations and have scheduled meetings the remainder of the year. And lastly, what I want to read to you, um, that punctuates the importance of our work, a proclamation from Mayor Merrill Bowser. National Arts and Humanities Month, October twenty twenty-one. Whereas the arts and humanities enhance and enrich the lives of every American and every district resident, expressing much of the collective wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind, and whereas the arts help us tell our stories and enable diverse communities to explore their history and culture to better understand one another with the support of the National Endowment for the Arts, the fifty-six state and jurisdictional arts agencies, including our own District of Columbia Commission on the Arts and Humanities and Humanities DC. And whereas the nation's arts and culture sector, nonprofit, commercial, and educational, is a nine hundred nineteen point seven billion-dollar industry that supports five point two million jobs, four point three percent of the nation's economy, and boasts a thirty-three billion-dollar international trade surplus. And whereas in the district, arts and cultural production, I'm sorry, in the district, arts and cultural production account for over twelve point six million dollars and eight point eight percent of our local economy, contributing over fifty-seven thousand jobs. And whereas the COVID-nineteen pandemic challenged by business and art sectors and their workforce has demonstrated resiliency, inspiration, and community, despite having ninety-nine percent of its producing and presenting organizations' council events, all the while being on the forefront of jump-starting the economy. And whereas Washington DC is committed to supporting and building equity, diversity, and access for our creative community, now therefore, I, the mayor of Washington DC, do hereby proclaim October twenty twenty-one as National Arts and Humanities Month in Washington DC, signed by our mayor, Merrill Bowser. So congratulations to all of us, uh, for this re-indication of the importance of the work that we're doing uh, to the country and to the nation's capital. With that, I will move to the director's report. Heron?
Thank you, Reggie. Good afternoon, everyone. Um, I would, I was hoping to just perhaps highlight some of the highlights for twenty twenty-one, uh, do a quick walk through some of the sort of major, um, um, accomplishments that we've had, commission and agency together. Um, and it takes setting it down on paper to look at it to see how much work has actually happened. Um, so this is a testament of, of staff energy, staff work, um, commission partnership and guidance and, and, um, um, work together with the agency and staff members. Um, you've all received the reports ahead of time, but I wanted to just sort of quickly highlight some of the agency development, um, accomplishments. We managed to, uh, conduct and finalize uh, a, a six-month task, task force on equity and inclusion and belonging, uh, session with Reggie as the facilitator of it. Um, and complete that and, and, and push it through to recommendation stage um, and have a final report completed for it as well. We also completed two major planning documents, the, um, CH Strategic Plan, which is a plan for, uh, uh, three years, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three, as well as a public art master plan, um, for, for, um, twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three as well. Uh, most recently, we completed the, uh, lighting repairs of the gallery and, uh, a little while back, we also, um, did some, some repairs to the gallery ceiling. Uh, a lot of this had been sort of, um, you know, happening in real time, and we were responding to what was going on infrastructurally, but it was also, it's also going to mean that we have, uh, a really good gallery together for, um, next year for all of our exhibitions, um, coming, uh, coming up in, in the next few months and, and into the future. Um, along the lines of inclusion, diversity, equity, and access, as well as improved grant-making, uh, we were able to, um, include, uh, weighted review criteria on most of our, uh, grant programs. This means that we've been able to embed a lot of the IDEA values into our, uh, grants process. Um, the panelists have been reviewing with those, um, um, criteria in mind and so on, so that's a really good movement forward. Um, we've also collected demographic data that we will be analyzing on panelists and on our grant applicants. Um, so that we've successfully sort of collected in this cycle of FY twenty-two, and we'll be looking to analyze those. Um, we've had an opportunity to present, uh, additional grants for relief, uh, for both individuals and for organizations, a combined five point five million. This is pretty astronomical as, as government agencies go that, um, provide grants to the public, both in scope and size. Uh, this is a lot of, uh, money and process involved in, in pushing out these grants, so that's, that goes to, um, the, the hard work of staff and, uh, sister agencies, um, in, in getting that money out into the hands of, of our, um, grantees. We've done a big push for community engagement. As you all know, most of you sat in on it and participated in some of our, uh, community engagement initiatives. Uh, we, we did those on three tracks and, um, and also kind of picked up on other opportunities to present to community members through council member offices and so on. Um, and we had a really good attendance rate, uh, for the, the months of January through May last year of over two thousand people logging in and, and participating. Beyond grant-making, the agency, as you know, does, um, the annual NEA Poetry Out Loud, uh, presents the finalists for the District of Columbia. Um, we, you will see below that we've expanded this programming for next year, um, to include a two-day festival, uh, titled Words on Fire, uh, Poetry and, and Performance Festival, and shout out to our arts education team for really revving it up, uh, Alorie and Camille, and thinking of additional ways to sort of, um, broaden the scope of what we do with this program. Um, so that, that's happening, um, in, uh, March, March, April timeline, I think, of next year. We also applied, this was a first, we applied for a federal grant that was available through the National Arts Strategy, uh, uh, National, uh, Assembly of State Arts Agencies and the Roja Philanthropic, uh, Leveraging State Investments in Creative Aging, the LISC-A grant program. We applied for it and received it. It's a program that will expand access to arts education learning to our older, uh, adults in the district who were particularly, um, hard-hit by, uh, COVID and the isolation that followed, uh, COVID protocols. So we have made progress on, we applied for this last year, we received the money, and, uh, right now, the teaching artists have been paired to begin to create, uh, curriculum for participants at, uh, local centers for older adults. So we're very excited about that. Uh, another piece that was new, uh, last year was the, in FY twenty-one, was an application to the NEA, folk or tradition, uh, traditional arts partnership. Um, as most of you know, this became a part of the, uh, state partnership, um, agreement last year. NEA was, was, uh, was introducing it last year to all state arts agencies. And ours got accepted. It was a partnership, uh, proposed with Howard University. Um, and it's actually the first, uh, historically black college or university to partner in this national program. Um, it'll be a, a program focused on Go-Go. We're working on it with our commissioner, uh, Natalie Hopkinson and, um, and Howard University Partners to really sort of institutionalize the study of, um, Go-Go music, but broader than that also, uh, vernacular cultures, im- immigrant cultures, music cultures here in the district that are, uh, uh, you know, aspects of, of, um, community, um, community expression, community identity, and, um, and we're looking forward to how that, that, uh, begins to take shape. Um, by way of FY twenty-two updates, we've awarded over six hundred and seventy-five grants thus far. Uh, we will be voting on a few more today, uh, through our various grant programs, uh, beginning October first, that got announced, and things are moving along. Uh, we also have an amazing exhibition up at our newly minted gallery. A few commissioners have come through and seen, uh, the, the gallery, the lighting, and all of how it's been put together. The public art team has been working really hard to put together this DC Art Now twenty twenty-one exhibition for our FY twenty-two Art Bank Grant Program. Um, so we look forward to, um, seeing who the, uh, successful applicants might be for, uh, to join the collection for the Art Bank, uh, program. Um. I think I'll stop there. Most of the rest of it is, as I've, I've touched upon, um, so I'll stop there. Thank you, Chairman Van Lee.
Thank you.
Chairperson Van Lee.
Yes.
I just wanted to say, um, that I've visited the, the Art Bank exhibition today, uh, along with Jose, and it's really magnificent, and the space is beautiful, and they, Sarah and Lauren, Lauren and others have done just a magnificent job. So it's worth visiting if you have the opportunity.
Yes, yes, I will, and we all should.
I think we're gonna create an opportunity for everyone to come through before the end of the exhibition.
Wonderful. It's just magnificent. Congrats to all.
Yeah, it was really nice. Well done.
Remind me when is the end?
Uh, November, I want to say November eighteenth-ish, uh, nineteenth, November nineteenth, so we'll find a date, yeah, before it closes.
Great, good. Another opportunity for a party. Love it. And something to celebrate. So thank you for that report. Uh, now we're gonna have a public comment by Yasmin Peraskivas, who is with the DC Full Fashion Collective. Welcome.
Hi, Reggie. Hi, Commissioners. Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me. Thank you very much for all the initiatives that you are all undertaking to promote cultures and art in the DC area. Um, I'm new here, um, so thank you very much again for the, for the welcome and, and giving me this platform this afternoon. Um, some of you may know that over the past few years, I've been working with DC's international community, uh, mainly using my, uh, foreign language and, uh, marketing skills. I have been involved with the Winter National Event that takes place at the Ronald Reagan Building annually, um, as well as the Embassy Open House Tours that, uh, take place and bring so many people to the district. Um, but over the past few months, I've gotten in touch with, uh, many people that are making up DC's creative economy. Um, a lot of them are entrepreneurs like myself, and, um, I thought it would be an ideal opportunity for everybody to come together and, uh, show off some of their skills. Uh, so one month from today, on November eighteenth, Thursday, November eighteenth, uh, the following event, uh, the DC Fall Fashion Collective is what I'm putting together. It will feature local retail businesses with a focus on female and LGBTQT-owned retail businesses uh, from the DC area. The event will be a celebratory event slated to take place in DC's Union Market area. Uh, it will take place from six thirty PM until nine thirty PM. And it will be donation-based. The suggested donation is twenty dollars, and it will include a ten percent discount to the participating, uh, retail vendors that are taking place. And those vendors are, um, as I mentioned before, primarily woman-owned, small retail businesses in the DC area, as well as, um, members of the LGBTQT, uh, community. Um, again, this is reflecting what you touched on earlier, the aspect of inclusion, diversity, and equity, and, um, promoting, uh, the diversity, not only, um, in regards to the LGBTQT community, but also the ethnic diversity that exists in the, uh, DC area. Um. There will be a ten percent discount, as I said, to participating, uh, vendors. There will be music and beverages offered as well. Um, benefits for participating vendors, um, include having the opportunity to promote their brand, uh, and expand their, uh, reach, their audience, um, at a time when it's most needed. So many have suffered tragically during the past year and a half to two years. Uh, it's also an opportunity to bring the community together for a worthy cause. Uh, I failed to mention that the twenty, uh, dollar suggested donation will go to benefit the Whitman Walker Clinic. Um. This is an opportunity for the attendees, uh, to have an experiential shopping experience, uh, because not only will they have the opportunity to shop from local vendors, um, but they will be able to meet with the vendors themselves as well. Uh, local artists have also offered to have their works in display in the background. Um. And yes, another thing that was also mentioned earlier, um, the long-term. the long-term benefits of participation for the participating vendors are relationship building and meeting other vendors in the DC area, as well as stakeholders such as sponsors, will allow them to be involved in other such programs in the future. And we think that this project does embrace some of the things mentioned earlier. It seeks to bring inspiration to aspiring members of the creative economy in Washington DC. It expresses a feeling of resilience, that the arts do not die during periods of distress. And again, it embraces the spirit of community with so many different sectors being involved and coming together for a good cause and expressing the creativity that still exists and thrives in the Washington area. And so with the support of Washington's Commission on Art and Humanities, and that support being through the promotion via social media channels or media or any other connection to partners in the community, the DC Fall Fashion Collective promises to grow into an event that takes place multiple times per year and focuses on different sectors of the creative economy when they need it most. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you very much. There are many of us that are very excited over this event. And on the chat, various people are asking for information. So let's make sure that we can provide, that we can go to the social media, we can provide that information, because I think you'll get a lot of support for this activity. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you. Take care. Now we'll have a finance report. Kimber and Brian?
Thank you. Hi, everyone. We had an opportunity for the finance committee to have a brief meeting and sort of do the transition. So definitely appreciate Cece and all of her work in transitioning. So I'm looking forward to working with the finance committee and Brian and Reggie as we go forward. So Reggie, Brian, and I also had a chance to meet and just sort of begin to unpack the process. And so I think our opportunity is now to go back to the finance committee and sort of continue those more broader conversations and deep dive as we deepen, dive into the budget. So Brian, I'll pass it off to you, so more of a tactical update. And I know you and I have some more work to do before we bring back to the finance. So we would expect at our next meeting to have a more robust finance update.
Great. Thank you, Kimber. Thank you. Thank you, Cece. I mean, thank you, Kimber. Wow. See, how long it's been? So, yeah. So, yeah, we just scratched the surface a little bit there as it pertains to financing and the fiscal climate for the, for the agency. Today, I have very little to offer, only by way of the fact that we're still closing out fiscal year 21. So the information that I'm providing today is pretty much the same information that I provided in the last meeting. There's not much movement in terms of major expenditures or anything of that nature. Simply because, like I said, we're still closing out, we're in the process of closing out contracts as well as the grants. The other thing is that we've just begun, as Director Sarek Abrahan said, mailing out six-hundred-and-seventy-five grants, that's totaling somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-seven, twenty-eight million dollars. And you're going to vote tonight on additional grants for fiscal year 22. And then along with that, we're in the process of executing the contracts or continuing the contracts that support, sustains the work of the agency. On a more exciting note, we did receive a revenue forecast dated September 30th, and the actual revenues are higher despite everywhere else being down. So it is something that we're looking forward to formatting into the fiscal year 23 budget. So Kimber, once we actually begin to put together the components of it from the legislative, from the legislative perspective, then we go to exactly listen to what the director has to offer. I'm assuming, I'm new to how the commission presents to everyone as well. So, but I look forward to presenting that information to the director, and then we have a collective meeting about it, so that we can present to the public.
Well, this is great news. More money to do better things for more people is always great news. So thank you. Thank you, Brian. Now we're going to the grants committee, which is what we're here for. Gretchen and David, you want to speak to us about grants?
Yes, we will. And that's the best news I've heard lately from Kimber and Brian, more money. We love more money and grants. Okay, can we put the slide up for grants, please? We're only going to be talking about one grant, not only, because it's a very large grant today. It's the Fab Facilities and Buildings Grant. The other one that we have not reported on is Liftoff, but we'll be doing that in November. And that'll be in plenty of time. So today, the one that we're going to talk about is Facilities and Buildings. It's a grant that supports qualified organizations that own or rent facilities and tend to own or rent facilities or seek other permanent property or equipment designed for training, management, production, or presentation of performance or exhibition of the arts and humanities. For FY22, there were two recommendations that came from the lengthy, lengthy discussions between the grants committee and the grant staff. We always have a combined meeting there, so we get everyone's input. And for FY22, we had two recommendations, number A being award thirty-five of the applicants, and B, award forty-eight of the applicants. And the grants committee unanimously voted to recommend, to the full commission, recommendation B, which gives us forty-eight awards versus the thirty-five. This is quite a big difference from 21 and 20, where we awarded twenty-eight and thirty-two respectively, as you can see. We had four panel cohorts totaling. I want to scroll up a bit, please. Thank you. The number of applicants, we had a total of fifty-eight applications. FY21, forty-eight, and FY20, thirty-six. So we're growing. The grants manager was Kevin Hasser, and Kevin, I really want to thank you for all of the work you did. This was a big program, a very big grants program. And Kevin did all the due diligence and was as detailed as anybody could have been with his presentation and discussion to the grants committee. So thank you, Kevin. The commissioner conveners for the panels, and we had four of them, were Alma Gates, Natalie Hopkins, and Reggie Van Lee, and myself. In terms of the FY22 Fed, excuse me, program updates, FY22 received ten more applications than 21. For the first time, the review cohort has expanded into a fourth panel. We normally have three. The average project size dropped for the second year in a row, which is really not that big of a surprise, especially with COVID and the number of challenges that our organizations have been experiencing. Organizations are asking for support of smaller projects, potentially because they are more manageable or because they're a smaller organization seeking funding. FY22 Fed explicitly included digital infrastructure, which I think everyone is leaning toward now, because we have a new normal where we're not necessarily all of them going together. In terms of the allocation of funds, an applicant's raw score determines their percentile ranking within the review cohort. So we divided up the organizational budgets into four cohorts. Award recommendations use their percentile ranking in the following tier structures. Where funding breaks were close, we refer to the panel feedback for additional applicant inclusion at the lowest funding tier. We really do take the time to listen to our panelists, who have spent a lot of time and effort reviewing each of these applications, not only before the official panel, but in preparation for that. I won't read A and B to you, but by line, but what you can see is that with recommendation A, we go down to the fiftieth percentile with a seventy-five percent awards fulfilled, and the fortieth percent, seventy percent awards fulfilled. Recommendation B basically gives more money to more people. So that's why we are recommending B. Go down a little bit farther, please. Not that far. Recommendation B received unanimous support from the grants committee. Are there any questions? Because if not, Reggie, I'd like to go. Excuse me.
Bless you.
Thank you. I'm having such a ragweed attack. I'm so sorry. If there are no questions, Reggie, how would you like me to proceed? I can't hear anything, so I guess.
Now saying that if there are no questions or issues, I'll take a a motion, rather, from someone to approve the recommendations of the grant committee.
So moved.
And second?
Second.
I will now go through the roll call, and if you are in agreement, do it in affirmative. Stacy Lee Banks? Four masses Barry?
Yes.
Maggie Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Juanese Floyd? Rona Friedman?
Yes.
Alma Gates?
Yes.
Natalie Hopkins? Kimber Minkeke?
Yes.
Mary Ann Miller? Mariah Rooney?
Yes.
Cece?
Yes.
Carla Sims? Hector Torres?
Yes.
Jose Euclis?
Yes.
Gretchen Warden?
Yes.
Derek Younger? Is Derek still with us? The yeses have it. If there are any people who are not in favor of this recommendation or any abstains, it is approved. Thank you to the grants committee, the panelists, to the conveners, to everyone. This is amazing work, and I personally support the notion of giving more money to more people. This is in the spirit of being inclusive. So since we can't afford it, it's good for us to be able to do it. Thank you. Thank you. My notes say next we will talk about any new businesses. Any new business to be brought forward by the commissioners? If not, then I thank you. The next meeting of the commission will be held on Monday, November fifteenth, 2021, at 5:30 PM. And this meeting is adjourned, as soon as I find my. So thank you, everyone, and good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reggie?
Thank you.